Welcome to this special live edition of Go Vote Omaha. This is a candidate forum for the Omaha Public Schools District Board, Subdistress 1 and 7, presented by the League of Women Voters of Greater Omaha. I'm Jerry Simon, a League member and moderator for the forum. The League of Women Voters never endorses or opposes political parties or candidates. We present this forum solely for voter education. Here's the format for our forum this evening. Each candidate will get a one-minute opening statement, and then we'll go to a question and answer period. It's a live show, so you can call in your questions. We'll ask as many of the candidates as we can. We'll conclude with one-minute closing statements by the candidates. A timekeeper will signal each candidate when they have 30 seconds of time remaining and when to stop speaking. And before the forum, the candidates drew lots to determine the initial speaking order, and I'll introduce them to you in that order now. There are four candidates running in the primary election for Subdistrict 1. Three of them are here with us this evening. Three candidates are running in Subdistrict 7, and we have all three with us this evening. Our first candidate for Subdistrict 7 is Amanda Ryan. For Subdistrict 1, Ricky Smith. Subdistrict 1, Yolanda Williams. Subdistrict 7, Mario Polite. Subdistrict 1, Crystal Gabel. And Subdistrict 7, Carol Crecci. And now we'll go directly to our opening statements, and we'll start with Amanda Ryan.
Hello. I would first like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this candidate forum, and also for the audience, because without the concerned voters in these districts and for these races, none of us would be here tonight. My name is Amanda Ryan, and I am running to represent Subdistrict 7 for the Omaha Public Schools Board of Education. As an active community member, I will work to be an advocate for our students, our teachers, and our Omaha community. I believe in supporting our youth by providing quality education to prepare them for what their futures may hold. I believe in supporting and listening to our teachers to ensure that they have proper tools for their classrooms. And last, I believe in Omaha and our community, and it is essential to support our future community leaders to make Omaha a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Ricky Smith.
Hello. My name is Ricky Smith, and I'm running for Omaha Public School Board, Subdistrict 1. With over 21 years of experience in youth and development strategies, working for Creighton University, the North Omaha Boys and Girls Club, Urban League of Nebraska, and now the University of Nebraska at Omaha, I'm very vested in the education of our youth. I would like to ask for your support as we go forward and work on extending our hand and working together to collaborate together with educators, teachers, to improve education efforts in the Omaha Public School District. As a dedicated husband, father, and volunteer, I know about doing the work and getting in there and getting things done. I'm a certified grant writer and have done such with the University of Nebraska at Omaha and also the Urban League of Nebraska. I've also been doing things with the Department of Education, and so knowing policy, writing policy, and evaluating policy is one of my strengths, and I want to represent you and your students in Subdistrict 1.
Thank you. Yolanda Williams.
Good evening. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for their continued work on getting voter information out to the general public and to our youth, as well as we discussed earlier tonight. I am currently rerunning for the Omaha Subdistrict 1 seat for Omaha Public Schools. I'm committed to seeing the work of the strategic plan completed and fully implemented, as the strategies and objectives will have a direct correlation to the closing of the achievement gap, and students will be better prepared for post-secondary opportunities and beyond. This directly correlates to my focus on students needing to graduate with the skills to compete on the 21st century level. I continue to advocate for students, as they are the next generation, and it's a voice that we need to hear more of. So I again ask for your support, so I can continue to be the right voice for Subdistrict 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Mario Polite.
First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this candidate forum and allowing the voters to get to know us better. I have a bachelor's in administration of justice and a master's in business administration. I'm also a captain in the United States Army Reserves, currently in command of 108 personnel. Our campaign is based on three things: leadership, because the board is a leadership body, and we need to place proven leaders in key positions; integrity, because I'll always remain transparent and do what is right for the district as a whole; and excellence, because I want to help build the nation's best school system. It is said that beside every great man, there is a great woman, and beside me, I have an OPS school teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal Gabel.
Hi, I'm Crystal Gabel. I'm 31. I have a bachelor's in writing, and I'm a professional writer. My education has continued beyond my degree, and I have coursework in child psychology, middle and high school education, and composition, rhetoric, and linguistics. I have teaching experience at the middle and high school level as a substitute teacher, and I've also taught composition at a college level. What we really need in a public school board is, in a public school system, is one that works for everybody and discriminates against no one. So with that in mind, I support a few particular things: the recently approved sex ed program; I support medical marijuana use during the school day by students who are patients; I support revisions to DARE programs to focus on the dangers of drugs like prescription drugs and alcohol; I want to reintroduce farming, hemp farming, and egg classes; I want to create classrooms that give teachers freedom and move away from the common core; I want to extend time for unstructured learning and play for all ages.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Crecci.
I'm Carol Crecci. I'm running for Subdistrict 7. My professional expertise and personal passion is education. My heart has always been with students and working to ensure that every student is given every opportunity to succeed. I've lived and worked in this community for more than five decades, and I know that South Central Omaha is a very special and diverse community that deserves strong representation on the school board. I bring a commitment to and understanding of what we need to do to improve neighborhood schools, to support student learning, to involve parents, local businesses, and others in making every school in OPS an A-plus school. I believe that I would be a strong advocate for teachers and students on a school board where few current members have backgrounds in education. I have experience in developing curriculum and teacher evaluation models, and have closely followed OPS school board issues for many years.
Thank you. Now we'll go to our first question, and it is: "The chief responsibilities of the school board are to hire, fire the superintendent, and to develop policy. What other roles would you embrace as a school board member?" And we'll start with Ricky Smith.
Well, as a member, it's very, very important that we are working collaboratively with the educators, also the parents. I want to work to get the parents more engaged in the educational process and in the educational system. We do that by bridging some of the gaps and the lacks of communication. By doing that and being a school board member, I'm very accessible, and I'd love to talk to parents and to students about what it is they want to see within the educational system and how we can improve those. There are a lot of opportunities for us to make some change and do some things strategically to make sure that we're headed in the right direction, and also working collaboratively with our superintendent. That's what I feel our role is as board members.
Thank you. Yolanda Williams.
As the incumbent, I've learned through the many challenges of being on the board what our actual roles are. They are, as you stated, hiring, firing, and managing the superintendent, creating policy, and managing the budget. Outside of that, it really is our role as an individual is to be out in the community, to talk to our constituents, to listen to parents, to have an open ear to students. I think, but the most misconception of being a school board member is that, as one, you truly have no power. It takes a board, the entire board, to create policy, and that's for me where I have stayed true to the role, as well as listening to students and staff. There's always that time to collaborate and do work in committee meetings, but truly, the role of a board member is three things: to hire, fire, manage the superintendent, to create policy, and to manage the budget of $821 million of taxpayer dollars.
Thank you. Mario Polite.
I see the board as a leadership body. It provides the vision for the district, creates policy, sets the goals, should collaborate with, creating this strategic plan with the superintendent. The superintendent, in my view, basically acts like the right-hand man of the board. He's going to execute that vision for the board. The board should have a lot of inputs and outputs, so coming from, you know, inputs and outputs back and forth with the administration, the superintendent, parents, the business community, and teachers, and the general public. My, one of the things I really want to do is to try and create a best places to work in OPS. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal Gabel.
One role that I would embrace, in addition to what's been mentioned, is really focusing on the curriculum. I think that as a country, we're moving beyond textbooks. You see very organic, local content being created by parents, teachers, faculty members, board members, in order to improve the information that we're giving our students. We feed them a lot of misinformation, and I think as a board, we have to be very careful of that information that we're giving to our students. And the board is one place where we can put a foot down to textbooks, start creating our own curriculum, make it digital and accessible to everybody at school, and then we can save lots of money in those textbook costs and reinvest them. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Crecci.
Well, in addition to the three things that have been mentioned in terms of supervising the superintendent, watching the budget, and creating policy for the district, I think the school board is important as a link to parents, students, and the community in general. The one thing I want to emphasize that the school board is not, and that is a micromanager for the schools or principals, that's not the job of the school board.
Thank you. And Amanda Ryan.
Along with the other responsibilities that were mentioned, I really would like to give a voice to our students. Throughout my campaign, I have, some high school students have reached out to me wanting to get more involved with our community, and how do they become leaders in our community? And so I'm giving them an opportunity to learn how to be involved with going to different meetings that I have with other community members, going door-to-door with me, so they can listen to the parents' voices and other community voices. So I really want to be a strong advocate for our students, and also an advocate for our teachers, to make sure that they're being heard in the boardroom as well.
Thank you. Here's a question from a viewer: "Do you support the decision of the current school board to update the sex education curriculum?" And we'll start with Yolanda Williams.
Well, being one of the yes votes, I absolutely stand behind that. I work with students every day. I have access to thousands of students, and I've really, that's, it's an issue that I've really talked to students about. Although it doesn't directly correlate with some of my personal beliefs, this is not about my education. This is how we educate students for 21st century healthy lifestyles and living. And so I adamantly stand behind that decision, and I look forward to changing the view of what the school district looks like in comprehensive sex education. Thank you.
Thank you. Mario Polite.
Thanks. So every time I hear someone talk about the sex education curriculum, I kind of want to correct them, because I know it as the human growth and development. And it covers a lot of things, not just sex. I mean, there's all kinds of things that it talks about, drug abuse and that kind of thing. So I support it. You can opt out of it, which was a smart thing that they put into it, because there are some things that are controversial in it. And then one thing that I, if I would have been on the board, I would have liked to see them add a section about preventing gang involvement and gang activity, because we have too many kids that are getting involved in gangs and crime and drugs at a young age, and that's an opportunity to try and intervene that.
Thank you. Crystal Gabel.
I support the current sex ed, human growth curriculum that's been expanded. I think we should even go further and expand it some more and look at different options that are also involved in that area. Again, this goes back to misinformation. The more information we can give our youth, the better choices they can make in their future. If we can hold off pregnancy and hold off disease and prevent disease, then these people will have healthy futures, and that's super, super important. So continue pushing the information. They're going to get it on the internet if they don't get it at school, so let's just give it to them straight. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Crecci.
I too support the decision on revamping the human growth and development component. In a perfect world, these are, many of these subjects would be covered at home. The reality is, they're not being covered at home, and it's important for our students to get the real truth about these issues. I guess that's all.
Thank you. Amanda Ryan.
I do support the update to the sex ed curriculum, and I view it as a public health issue. So we know that Omaha has a high STD/STIA rate, and if we give kids education on how they can prevent that, and we're going to help Omaha lower that rate, we're also going to help lower unwanted teen pregnancies, and that in turn will lower some other things, such as abortion rates. And that's ultimately a big topic when this is getting discussed, is people were like, "We don't want abortion discussed." If we give kids the education to know how to prevent these things from happening, then those rates go down. So yes, I do support the update.
Thank you. And Ricky Smith.
I would have not supported the update had I had a vote. There should have been a lot more discussion amongst the board on ways we could have possibly tailored it a little bit better via the grade levels. There are some things that probably should have been left out, and as an OPS board member, we can't be the parents to students as well. Some of those things have to be taken care of by the parents. So if we wanted to engage parents in those discussions and say, "These are the things that we decided to leave out of the curriculum, but we would love for you to have a forum or discuss these things with your child," those things should happen in the home. Now, I do approve updating curriculum and being kind of up to speed with other things, and I can appreciate that, but I would have voted no, especially since the community came out in such big numbers and opposed to it. As a board member, they put you in a seat to listen to them and to be their voice, and so if you're not being their voice, you're not being the advocate that you said you would be.
Thank you. Here's our next question: "What level of transparency would you like to see from school district leaders and employees?" And we'll start with Mario Polite.
That's probably one of the main topics that comes up when I talk to people. They want access, they want to be, they want to see transparency. It's not enough to put something on a website, because people, they don't have time or they just don't know that it's on the website. I'd like to see more transparency and collaboration between the board and the public, and I'd also like to see the board more, or the district as a whole, engage the employees more and solicit more suggestions from the employees, because the best ideas always come from employees themselves. Those ideas ought to be made transparent so that everyone can see where it went, who's working it, and what's being done, and then they get feedback. And it will also go towards greater employee engagement, and that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Crystal Gabel.
I think any taxpayer-funded board should be completely transparent. Every single penny should be allocated and recorded and available to the public. There's that issue of how do you inform the public? It's about outreach, it's about creating community, it's about setting aside money for those efforts, because that takes time, and that takes a lot of effort, both on the parents, the teachers, the admin, the board, the students. Everybody has to get involved. And so we have to foster collaboration in order to get rid of these things that should be more transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Crecci.
Well, I think there already is a lot of transparency in that the board is a public body, and the budget is public, is a matter of public record, and so all of those things are accessible. What I think people don't see is the discussion that goes on behind the scenes, and that happens at committee meetings. And the problem is, those committee meetings typically happen during the daytime, when people are not available to attend. And so I would like to see some of those committee meetings moved to an evening hour, where the public could attend and hear the discussion between members.
Thank you. Amanda Ryan.
I think one way that we can work on transparency is just making our constituents aware that the agenda's posted before the meeting, and then you can also review the minutes after the meeting has concluded, and so anything that has happened, they can get updated on that as well. Also being an open ear towards the constituents if they have any issues or questions, comments, just being there and being receptive towards them and giving them straight answers. And then also the committee meetings, maybe letting those constituents know that you attended this meeting and you guys are now working on this thing as a committee member. So those are all things that we could do to improve transparency, I guess.
Thank you. Ricky Smith.
Transparency, it starts with integrity, doing the things that you said you were going to do, and then being visible and active in your community, so that people can continue to be a soundboard and bounce some ideas and those kind of things off of you. Also working together, that creates that transparency. When we know what direction we're going in, when we know what the strategic plan is laid out and what we want to do, when you are doing those things and working collectively and towards one direction, then that creates the transparency that's needed in order to be effective. Also, you have to remain active in the community and continue to be visible. We're out knocking on doors and those kind of things, and that's all good when you're trying to get a seat. But what happens when you're actually in that boardroom and you're there to make decisions? If you're not visible anymore, then you're not reflecting the views and the wants of the community. So being transparent also goes with getting information out as soon as you get it. The sooner you get information and share it with the public and let everybody know what's going on, these are the issues that we're talking about, these are the things that we want to tackle, that creates some of that trust and that integrity. That's where transparency comes from.
Thank you. Yolanda Williams.
Well, as when we started the board, transparency was one of my hot-topic issues, and we've come a long way. And how I will continue to ensure the governance structure of OPS facilitates transparency by continuing to work closely with the superintendent to create better strategies of accountability for not only staff, but for the board as well, and that's a journey that we've started and we're making great strides. Transparency is easiest to facilitate when everyone is on the same page regarding the process. We currently strive to be proactive instead of reactive, and we have a new communications director, and she is actually looking at some of those new strategies to help the district as a whole be transparent to taxpayers, parents, students, staff alike. And as a board member, it's very easy to get overly committed, but that's the role that I've taken on and served in the past three years of going to community meetings, meeting with parents, meeting with families, and sacrificing, because I think this role is very important, and that's why I'm committed to continuing the work that I started. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a curriculum question that came from viewers: "Do you acknowledge climate change is caused by humans, and should it be included in OPS science curriculum at all levels? And should computer coding be added to the curriculum?" And we'll start with Crystal Gabel.
That was a big question. Thank you for that question. I believe that, yes, we are, as humans, creating climate problems for our earth. We're destroying our earth. I think we're fracking and destroying our earth and causing earthquakes. I think we're polluting our tables, our water tables, the water that we get out of our tap water we're polluting, we're polluting with our chemicals. Climate change is all around us, and we need to address that in our classrooms. I think we can do that by talking about hemp in our agricultural classrooms, keeping young farmers in Nebraska, keeping them here, wanting to develop our state. And in addition to coding, of course, you know, you have to go to college to do that. Why don't I learn that in high school, so that when you're in grade 12, you're learning skills that you can take and maybe not have to get a higher education? You may be able to find a job right there and start making a living right there. So yes, more information in our classrooms will definitely improve our climate change and our view on climate change, and will definitely improve our image of, like, women who code, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Crecci.
Well, I do believe that climate change is a reality. I believe that humans have certainly played a role in that. But I think my concern is that regardless of where this came from, or where, what's causing the climate change, we have to deal with the reality that the climate is changing, and we have to help our students learn what to do to remedy some of the problems that could potentially be caused by climate change.
Thank you. Amanda Ryan.
Yes, I do believe that humans are involved in climate change, and I think a way that we could help kids in realizing this is talking about sustainable energy, our role as humans, what we can do with, like, recycling. Food waste is huge, and so being responsible consumers, just teaching those, our students all of those things. Also, that could go into, like, economics and how, once again, how to be a responsible consumer, and where we're taking our money and all of that. So yes, I do think that humans have a part in global climate change. And then as far as coding goes, absolutely. There's a new set of skills that kids need to be learning, and internet and websites and coding is very, very important to our age now, and so we should be teaching our kids how to do things like that.
Thank you. Ricky Smith.
I think we start with STEM and STEAM programs. We need to make sure that our kids are really up to par and up to speed in those science, technology, engineering, and mathematics skills, so we can begin to prepare them, not for what's happening right now, but for a future that doesn't even exist yet. And so it is the recycling, it is the sustainability things that our kids need to be made aware of and how they can have an impact on that. When you're looking at coding and computer programming and all those kind of things, it gives our kids a chance to be entrepreneurs and to think outside of the box. And I think it gives the teachers an opportunity to really push the creativity that our students already have. And so just being a support of the STEM and STEAM projects that are going on, the different programs who offer STEM and STEAM for our students, is a way that I would like to see Omaha Public School and the school board be more kind of proactive in providing enrichment for our students in that area.
Thank you. Yolanda Williams.
Well, acknowledging climate change is very important, and the work that we've done in policy that we've passed and curriculum that we've approved, we'll take Bryan High for example, they're doing great things in agriculture. You know, our schools are getting green awards and sustainability awards, and so this is the reality of the world that we live in, and our students are actually partaking in some of those processes to learn how to be more green and how to be more environmentally friendly, which is amazing, because it's not just happening in a few buildings, it is happening in buildings across our district, and we're looking for ways to be more green and be more efficient and use our planet and be kinder to our planet. And as far as computer coding, we definitely need to teach that, because all of us sitting up here will be having some student at one point teaching us coding, because that's just the way the world is, it's technology-based, and so that's what we need to be looking at. And I think as far as that technology portion, I think we've made great strides as a board to be leaders in that, of going away from, you know, using paper packets and using internet and using web-based solutions that are really helping us be connected with the curriculum and what we're doing at the district. So absolutely on both. Thank you.
Thank you. Mario Polite.
Climate change is obviously a reality. Even people that...
Even people that don't agree that there is climate change and that humans are at least partially a cause of that, I think would have to agree that what a better place to debate that than in a classroom. As far as coding goes, I could envision our schools having stated art, computer labs so that kids can work on coding and programming, websites, and whatever else they can come up with and create. Of course, we'd have to have teachers that are trained to teach that kind of thing, but that's kind of where the world is going. Thank you.
Thank you. We remind our viewers that we are live this evening, so please call in your questions to the number on your screen and we'll try to get all, as many as we can answered by our candidates. Here's the next question. What should the district do about aging infrastructure? Would you support the second phase of the bond issue? And we'll start with Carol Creji.
I absolutely support the following through on the second bond issue. I know from personal experience that the physical environment makes a difference in education. I taught at Central High for 25 years, many of those without air conditioning. And that first year that we had air conditioning, I was just amazed how much work I got done the first week of school. I mean, I actually felt productive the first week of school. So I know that air conditioning made a difference. So that physical plant is important, even if it's taxes, I know. But ultimately, I think it contributes positively to student learning.
Thank you. Amanda Ryan.
I would agree with that. A good environment for our students and for our teachers are, they're going to be able to work better, to teach better, to learn better. So it is really important that we look at the infrastructure of our buildings and our schools and make sure we're keeping up to date in code and everything. And making sure we're doing that in a responsible way with our budget. So really looking over how we're implementing those funds and where they're being allocated and used.
Thank you. Ricky Smith.
I'm also in support of the bond. I think we've done a good job thus far of providing the community with information to see what the progress is and where and how the money is being spent. I think we should also take a closer look at how much money is actually being put into Sub District One, my district, and how the improvements are going in those buildings. That's one of my concerns. And I also want to commend the current board for getting some things up to speed in the three-to-one computer ratio for students in that technology. Those things are important. Those things make a difference in the classroom. As long as we can continue on that track and make good decisions with the money, I'm in support of the next bond.
Thank you. Yolanda Williams.
We've been working diligently to keep the timeline for the bond work moving along. But many buildings that weren't scheduled under the current bond are in need of, you know, beyond routine maintenance and repair. And we recently approved the contract for a full facility study in those buildings. But the maintenance will also need to get completed for students to have a safe, secure environment to learn and for staff to work in, as well as to have the technological capabilities to support the growing digital age. Our buildings are overcrowded and student population tends, it's just continuing to grow. And I believe that's truly because of the amazing work that this board has done for the past three years. But we need to upgrade buildings. And we also need new buildings to accommodate our growing district. We have families that are eager to learn and to get into buildings. And without that, this second bond, we're not going to be able to feel what we're here to do is educate our young folks. And so, you know, a major update and overhaul of the Career Center is also in dire need. It's not, no longer an adequate space for the things that we're looking at, talking about coding and some of the climate control and all of the amazing STEAM projects and areas of study that we're looking at. And so we are desperately looking at making sure that we get that second bond done to make sure that we have 21st century facilities for our students to learn in and for our staff to have safe work environments.
Thank you. Mario Polite.
I deployed to Afghanistan, I was part of a team that worked with the Afghan government and tribal leaders to build infrastructure all over our area. We hired the local companies to build the projects. We paid them, we managed the projects in different phases and all the way through. And then one of the things that we did well, that I was mainly in charge of, was the information operation. So when we did something good, we would highlight the government's role in it. So with this second bond and the current bond as well, my goal would be to make sure that it comes in on time and under budget. I'm going to utilize local businesses and make sure that minority businesses have a chance to build the future as well. And then from my experience, I know that as far as the bids go, you want to make sure that you're getting the best bid, not necessarily the low bid. And then, of course, making sure that the public is well-informed, that they have an easy access to actually see the progress and the completion of these projects.
Thank you. Crystal Gabel.
Finding the money to update aging infrastructure and to build new and address all the new technology and all the new information that's available to us, we have to do it through taxes. But I don't support raising taxes. I think that we have a cash crop that's blooming all over the country, outside of Nebraska particularly, that could, it's called medical marijuana, that could finance our education. Colorado has millions of dollars going into their education program from medical marijuana, including recreational, including hemp production as well. That's money, it's a cash crop. We're a state and a country built on hemp and marijuana, and we need to return that way in order to stop taxing us to death, in order to educate our children and give us the future that we need. That's where the money should come from. Thank you.
Thank you. Here's our next question. What do you think is needed to ensure teacher retention? And we'll start with Amanda Ryan.
One thing that I think could be more reinforced, I don't know what the right word is for this, would be just make sure that we're listening to our teachers and any issues that they have in the classroom and working with OEA and just different things like that, just really listening to the teacher's voice. Also improving like classroom sizes, that helps, especially with new teachers coming in, they're handed this really big classroom and they don't know how to handle it, this is their first experience. So being that advocate for them and seeing what all they need, once again, like good salaries and the insurance and benefits and all of that will help as well. But I think really that ear is the biggest thing that they're asking for.
Thank you. Ricky Smith.
As a board member, we need to work a lot better with the collaboration and just the communication with our current educators. Being able to support them is key. Utilizing them as a resource is what we need to do because they are the professionals. They are the ones in the classrooms who are doing the work on a consistent basis. And one thing that I would like to examine is looking at Title II funds to actually provide some incentive for teachers who are doing good work. That's one thing that just recently came up. If Mark Evans does a good job with raising, you know, some percentages, we're going to give him some extra money or some incentive money for those things. And so I think the teachers who are doing the work definitely deserve that incentive pay.
Thank you. Yolanda Williams.
Well, to retain excellent teachers, you must provide first comparable salaries and benefits. And that's something, a vote that I cast that I'm most proud of is really trying to rectify the pay grade and the pay scale of our teachers who truly are professionals. We've also opened the floodgates for professional development opportunities. Autonomy to be part of the solution by engaging them not only in their prospective buildings but in the growth and change of our district. We have I L T teams, instructional leadership teams across our district that teachers are at the table with administrators and other representatives from the district, making sure that their voice is heard. And we're looking at how do we expand that? We have a cohort of schools that we look to expand, and so that's looking at a new movement. I know that something I've personally spoken with the superintendent many times is how do we grow this? Because we need those voices at the tables. They are in the classrooms with our students every day, and they know their job. This is what, this is their expertise, and we need to rely more on them. And we're always open to more collaboration. Some of my closest friends are teachers, and I get some of the most valuable input about teachers and curriculum and what's going on in the district from those folks that are in the building every day doing the work. And so to retain those teachers, you have to make sure that they are respected and that they are professionals. And that's something that we are continuing to do. And I just want to tell all the teachers out there, thank you very much for your work because it's truly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mario Polite.
My vision is to set, is make OPS one of Omaha's best places to work. I believe that we should be no lower than in the top 10 of the best places to work in the city. Where I work, we have an 83% job appreciation rating. So people love their jobs. And the biggest part of it is employee engagement. You actually feel like they actually care about you, they care about your career, they care about your family and where you're going in the future. I'd like to see, there are certain positions that could become job rotations, giving people a chance to get outside the classroom every now and then and do something a little different and grow in their work. Some of the positions can be, you'll get a bigger pool if you open up what types of degrees can apply to be like a vice principal or something like that if you've got ambitions to move up. So, but overall, I'd like to see us on a path to becoming best places to work.
Thank you. Crystal Gabel.
Teacher retention, all the things that have been said, resources, creative license, giving plenty of pay so these teachers can make ends meet and they don't have to work second jobs. Where's this money coming from? We can't keep taxing us to death. Like I said, other states are retaining teachers, they're retaining their police force, they're retaining their youth in their states, and they're doing that through legalization of medical marijuana and the hemp industry. And we will retain good teachers, we'll retain our youth here in the state if we can fund it. And that's how other states are funding it in this country. And so I think if, once we move that direction, teacher retention will not be a problem in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Creji.
Well, there's a couple of different issues here. We need to look at really two different groups, the young teacher and the veteran teacher. And one of the things that I see as a concern are the young teachers. We know that if they last five years, they'll probably be with us for life. But getting them, getting those beginning teachers to stay for five years is problematic. And so one of the things that I think we need to do is create a better mentoring system for those beginning teachers. And not just a one-year mentoring system, but something that covers over several years. For the veteran teachers, that might be one option for them, you know, to spend part of their day mentoring those younger teachers. It would be a change of pace for them, and they would also feel that they were respected. And we need a salary schedule that treats all parts of the salary, of the salary schedule, all of those different groups in a fair way.
Thank you. Here's our next question. Are schools currently adequately secured? Should more measures be taken to protect students and staff? And we'll start with Ricky Smith.
With the new bond issue and the improvements that we're making, I think we are stepping in the right direction to make sure that the schools are properly secured. There's a lot of training that the SROs go through on a consistent basis. And also teachers with lockdown procedures and those kind of things that are in our policy and procedures handbook, that's providing a safe learning environment for our students. And so those things are in place. And I think as we continue to utilize that bond money correctly, we can make sure that the students have a safe, educational, and fun learning environment to thrive in.
Thank you. Yolanda Williams.
Safety of buildings is, has been a top concern. And so with bond dollars, we have been able to add some security systems. However, there's still much work to do. Even some of the most secure buildings aren't always secure in the day that, in age we live in. And so we always need to look at cutting-edge opportunities to make sure that our students and our staff are secure and safe in their building. And it's an area, as new technologies are introduced, we can look at, cost is always an issue, but I think there's no cost that's more important than our kids' lives or our staff's lives. And so we just look, I personally look for making sure that we're cutting-edge, using some of those new security trends that are coming out, making sure that our staff are adequately trained on active shooters and some of those other processes that we can use. It's great to have the SROs in the building, but if you've been in one of the OPS buildings, one person can't save the whole school. And so we need to make sure that everyone in that building knows procedures, safety, precautions to take. And as we, as a board, look at how do we find additional measures to keep those buildings safe from harm? Thank you.
Thank you. Mario Polite.
Well, I spent 14 years in law enforcement, and eight of those years were on a SWAT team. So I know security frontwards and backwards. If you're worried about, and I think the question is leading towards like the school shootings, you have to make soft targets and hard targets. The bond is heading in that direction, I'd have to, I'd have to see the finished project, product to see if it would actually deter or stop anyone from getting in. We should be rehearsing active shooter, active shooter drills, that should be at least annually. It should incorporate the law enforcement agencies. They, you know, I'm glad that they're, they are, they do have, they are updating their security with this bond because for, I have a lot of friends that work in these schools, and I was a little worried because I, some of these schools you could just walk right into, anybody could just walk right into, and there was really nothing to stop them. And it was just a matter of complacency, and so I'm glad that they're doing something now. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal Gabel.
I think the safety of our children and our teachers, other faculty, other staff, admin, it's super important to keep them safe because they're our future. They're the ones preparing our youth for our future. And so I support security measures, but I think we need to be, we need to be careful about hypersensitivity. I wonder sometimes if certain laws that we've implemented, like no gun zones, have created issues like school shootings. When I went to school, I had teachers who had, they carried, they carried handguns with them. They were able to, my school allowed guns for protection of the students. And I don't ever remember having incidents like this when I was younger. And so I think it's still really new, this terrorism that we are putting on our children. And so we need to do a lot of research as a board to go forward to make sure that the policies that we have are keeping them safe, not just create new policies to continue keeping them safe, but make sure that the ones we currently have are addressing our needs to. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Creji.
I've, over my 25 years in OPS, I certainly saw drastic improvements in security. And I assume that those improvements have continued since I retired five years ago. Part of those, but part of that security issue is training, training for the teachers, training for our security staff, and regular drills and practicing, which I know the schools do. They're required by law to have plans in place for all of those things. And, but it also requires technology. And, you know, one of the things I've noticed is how many buildings have, you know, 300 doors. Well, how do you monitor all of those doors? It's very difficult without some technology.
Thank you. Amanda Ryan.
Yes, security is a huge issue with any organization. When you have employees, when you have youth in your building, you want to make sure that they are protected. So just always being up to date on different security measures, looking to see if we can implement them within our budget as well, and just making sure that there are streamlined processes for each member of OPS, whether it's a principal or a teacher or students, making sure that everybody knows what they can do to remain safe. And if... And if a situation does occur, what they can do to either prevent it or be safe.
Okay, thank you. We are at the end of our question and answer period and we're going to go to our closing statements from the candidates. And we'll start with Yolanda Williams, candidate in Sub District One.
For three years, I've fulfilled the terms of the role of the Board of Education member without prejudice, personal or professional agenda, or being influenced by any group. I filed to run for another term on my own accord so that I can continue to do the good work that I've been afforded to be a part of. My time on the board has provided much insight from the massive amount of hours that I've dedicated to do the work the right way, which is without agenda. I'm running for reelection on the OPS board because it provides the opportunity to have a direct hand and continued positive change for our key stakeholders, to be the identifiable voice of our community, to bring passion to our Board of Education, and to be the inspiration and motivation for those who are in need. It is imperative that our Board of Education is a proactive change agent that can be progressive in nature, willing to make decisions that are in the best interests of the community served, and to align with the global market for not only our students, but teachers, families, and our community. Please vote for Yolanda Williams. Thank you.
Thank you. And now a closing statement from Mario Polite, running for Sub District Seven.
Since starting this campaign, the question I get most is, why are you running for school board? The answer is simple. In a few years, my son will start school. And my goal is to send him to the best schools that I possibly can. It'll be a school that not only has high student achievement, but also has a sense of community. The teachers and staff should care about him not as a number, but as an individual. It'll be an efficient school with a collaborative and respectful relationship between teachers, parents, and the principal. But most of all, it'll feel like home. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal Gable, a candidate for District One.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. School boards need to have diverse voices, just like they have diverse students in the school board, or in the school system, excuse me. And so we have to represent not just what we have. And we have to remember that our youth are leaving us, either they're leaving our state, they're going to, they're dropping out of their workforce and public assistance. And we need to prepare them in a better way.
Carol Creji, running for Sub District Seven.
As a teacher and union representative, I have experience working with OPS administration, with the school board and the Unicameral on the resolution of various education issues. I believe strongly in public education and the important role it plays in our democracy. As your representative on the OPS school board, I will fight for more transparency and for more parent and community input. I am a retired OPS teacher and am South Omaha born and raised. You can count on me to fight for all of our kids and all of our schools. I believe strongly in public education, its importance in maintaining our democracy for future generations, and I'd appreciate your vote on May 10th.
Thank you. Amanda Ryan, running for Sub District Seven.
Once again, I would like to thank the League for hosting this forum and the viewers. Since beginning the campaign in January, I've been meeting with different community and educational leaders and I've been receiving their feedback about OPS. So I'm actively taking that feedback in and learning how I could as a board member implement that. In March, I began knocking on doors and talking to the constituents of the sub-district. And so far, I have reached 1,100 individual voters. And having their feedback is essential to what this job is. Also, I'm an active community member and I see the impact that OPS has on our future. I believe it is essential to have somebody on the board that will invest quality time in discussing issues with parents in our district, our teachers that are extremely passionate and want their voices heard, and our students. So to keep up with my campaign, if you visit Amanda Ryan for OPS on Facebook, that's where I'm posting everything. And also I would appreciate a vote on May 10th.
Thank you. And Ricky Smith, running for Sub District One.
The reason that I'm running is for our students. I've been in this community for over 21 years as an active advocate. The things that I do, it's not on an agenda. It's not to be popular. It's not to get in a seat. So if I win or if I lose, I will continue to be a community advocate. I'm running on higher expectations in education. And as an educator and as a father, we have to set those education expectations for our youth. The reason I'm running is because my son is a product of OPS. I'm a product of OPS. My wife and my youngest son is also products of OPS. I'm not running for myself, I'm not running for my community, I'm running for kids. So if you want to give your children a voice, vote Ricky Smith as the advocate and the voice of your children, May 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. The League of Women Voters would like to thank all of our candidates for participating this evening. And we remind you that the League never supports or opposes political parties or candidates. We present forums for voter education. We have other forums that are available for you to view that we have done for the primary election and those are on our Go Vote Omaha YouTube channel. You can connect to it directly from the League website at omahawlv.org. We had Legislative Districts 13 and 39, the M U D Board, OPPD Sub District Five, and we are going to be also doing OPPD Sub District Four. We did the second congressional district Republican debate just this past week and that forum is also available for viewing for you. So for the League of Women Voters, I'm Jerry Simon, reminding you to inform yourself about the issues and candidates. And on May 10th, Go Vote Omaha.